Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Longmont Helping Authority Board of Commissioners regular meeting today, Tuesday, April 15. Can I have a roll call, please?
Well, let's go. Start with you.
Commissioner Yagro.
Commissioner Yagro Berry. Lauren Selly, Assistant Director for LHA.
Harold Megas, Interim Executive Director.
Molly O'Donnell, Housing Director.
Sarah, Public Safety.
Quincy Williams, Regional Property Manager, LHA.
Kendra Daniels. Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Go ahead.
Matthew, you're the next.
Commissioner Popkin.
Kendra Daniels, Accounting Supervisor.
Tim Hall, Assistant Secretary.
Karen Lamara, Assistant Executive Assistant.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Commissioner McCoy.
Commissioner Chris.
Chair Peck. I need a motion for the March 18th, 2025 minutes.
I move the March 18th, 2025 minutes. That's reasonable.
Second. Moved by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Yagro Berry. Is there any discussion or amendments to the minutes? Hearing none.
Sorry.
Oh, yes?
Just a quick note that my first name is spelled wrong in a couple of occasions. It's not, I'm not personally offended, but who might want to update that?
Okay. Two Ts and Matthew?
With that correction.
With that correction. Okay. So we are, I'm asking for a vote on the March 18th, 2025 minutes with the correction of the spelling of Commissioner Popkin's name. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes unanimously. The now ad public invited to be heard looks like we have a room full. Sure, that would be great. The first one is Bobette Berger, and you have three minutes.
Okay. How about if I stand? Is that?
That would be great.
Can everybody hear me okay? I'm asking for your assistance, housing authority. How do I need to give my address?
Yes, please.
Okay. Bobette Berger, 2196 Windin Drive. And I'm asking for assistance from you to put ordinances in place to protect residents of Longmont in order to provide needed housing. Longmont has zoning restrictions. They're to protect residents and provide attainable housing needs for the city. Those restrictions are there for a really good reason. The home at 2200 Windin Drive is a commercial, for-profit business. Mobara Solutions, a business providing housing for sex offenders, came to Longmont without certification from CAR, without, I've been researching, and I did have this earlier, but as far as I know, without a license to have the business in Longmont. Their stated communications on their website says that they're communicative to the city and are very transparent, but we're finding that that's not wholly true when there are businesses in a residential area. And this home now with seven sexual offenders, and there has been turnover already. The individuals that are in that home are fulfilling a probationary time period, and I'm able, and so are you, to see who they are. You can look on the sexual offenders' website with the address in and see who's there. Two people have left, some new people have come in. The risk to our community is increased without firm restrictions in place for this kind of housing. And Longmont needs ordinances to protect our children, those that are at risk in our city. It's very close to some senior housing, some attainable housing, that seniors are at risk for this, and it's most important to get the ordinances put in place as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobette. Kevin Benitez.
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 Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kevin Benitez. I am a resident of 2184 Windin Drive. I live three homes away from, as Bobette said it, a home that now inhabits seven sex offenders. Me and my family moved into our home approximately two years ago. My family, when we first moved in, consisted of myself, my wife, my small daughter, who was four at the time, and my son, Oliver, who was one. Since that time, my family has known nothing but peace and tranquility in our home. My children can play outside, safe, and I can trust my neighbors. This past week, I welcomed a new baby girl in my family, and the severity of the situation really set in. I thought of it, and I realized that no longer will my daughter, my youngest little girl, know what it's like to play outside without her parents being concerned. I do not trust my daughter to play in our backyard since we live right next to the mailbox. I can't trust for my children to ride their bikes around our little alleyway since it blocks up against this home. In the future, I will not trust for my children to walk to school or to even walk to their friend's house in the neighborhood. And because of that, I would like that the city impose and act to better plan for these situations. We cannot allow individuals to come into our community, rent out homes for the sole reason of profit, without any regard for the citizens and the community that they impact. The majority of the people here are my neighbors, and I believe that you can see that the devastation is felt. We are worried, we are scared for our community, we are worried for our children, we are worried for everyone in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Charlotte Iverson.
Charlotte Iverson, 182 Olympia Avenue. Prairie Village, just like most communities in Longmont, it is beautiful, well-planned community, it is zone, single-family residential, where young families buy two-story homes and man-child homes by seniors. It has a school nearby and a neighborhood park. It is the type of community where children walk to school and play in the park and seniors stroll. The perfect place for families starting out and seniors during their last years of home ownership. A safe place for children and older life. In February, everything changed. Mobara Solutions, a for-profit business, moved into Prairie Village under the radar and without certification to house convicted felony sex offenders. They not only ignored certification for their halfway house, they ignored zoning laws as well. Currently, Longmont has no residence to restrict where sex offenders live or distances from parks and schools. Longmont needs to pass ordinances which applies to all sex offenders with distant requirements of 1,000 feet from schools, 500 from parks, and limits the numbers of offenders in one household. Since Longmont has failed thus far to stop Mobara Solutions from doing business on Windin Drive, it is logical to assume that they, along with other companies, will be emboldened to use more single-family homes for their businesses, thus reducing the number of attainable homes for families and seniors. There are better places suited for companies like Mobara's. It is not in areas designated for families. Single-family home attainability will be negatively impacted by the city if it does not act. The City Council has the responsibility, the power, and the authority. We implore you to use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Steve Altshuler, 1555 Taylor Drive. For years now, I've been talking to the City Council about declaring Longmont to not be a sanctuary city. Ultimately, Mayor Peck pointed out that Longmont is a home-rule city, which means Longmont doesn't have to follow the rules from Denver for the state. I've also asked for Longmont to go ahead and declare, "We're not a sanctuary city," because all the illegals don't know that we're a home-rule city. So make a declaration, protect the citizens of Longmont. Now we have the same situation right here with the child molesters. Why won't the City Council protect the citizens of Longmont? Why are they so focused on protecting criminals? Other people have already mentioned this, and it's a great point. This is a house, this is a business in the middle of a housing area. What are our zoning laws for if not to protect people from this type of situation? So I would ask the City Council, I don't know what the purpose is of protecting criminals versus protecting citizens, but it's something you really need to look in the mirror about and say, "Hey, what are we doing here?" Because you are here to take care of the citizens of Longmont. To anybody watching from Windin Drive or anybody in Longmont, check the website and see, there's 286 child molesters, rapists, whatever, throughout Longmont. There could be one literally right next door to you, and you don't even know it. This is not just one little problem. There's 286 problems in Longmont. Everybody needs to be concerned. I would say to you this, don't count on the City Council to protect you and take care of you. I would recommend you got second in the plates. Go down to a gun store, buy yourself a gun. Hey, you may not like it, Mayor, but if the city's not going to protect the people, the people have the right to protect themselves. Put a bumper sticker on your car, "Say I support the NRA." Let yourself be seen with a gun, because open carry is legal, to the best of my knowledge. Check with your local police. If the city's not going to protect you, you have the right to protect yourself, and that's what I would recommend. To the City Council, you can make your own laws. This is going to be a little shocking, but I'll tell you what. Make a law that says no convicted child molesting felon is allowed in Longmont unless they've been castrated. That will keep those people in other communities. You may not like it, you may frown. That will protect your citizens. If you have another way, I'm all for it. Do something with the laws. Get proactive. It'll protect the citizens of Longmont. That's what you're here for. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, unless our close public invited to be heard, and we will move on to old and new business. The first one is the Resolution, LHA 2025-05, which is adopting additional key fob policies.
Commissioner Peck, I just want to highlight that I think he skipped number two. We don't have any adjournments or submissions of documents, but just for the record.
It needs to go on. So, Molly, do we have any adjournments?
(laughing). Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So I'll take this one. As the 504 Coordinator for LHA, I review all reasonable accommodations that we receive from tenants and our voucher clients. One thing that I've noticed in my last year taking over this role has been that we have received a significant number of requests from senior residents for additional fobs. As practice, we give a fob for access to the building to any tenant who's living with us, and then we opt-in with the unit, so with the two-person household, we have two fobs, keys. Anyone who's requesting additional fobs for access would go through the reasonable accommodation process because they're asking for an accommodation to our rules, procedures, on the basis of having a disability and having a disability they really need. One of the things that I have encountered is that there are a lot of senior residents who may not have a known or perceived disability. They might not be able to get documentation to support a disability if there is, because it's one that exists, pursuant to our housing laws. And so I'm having to deny those requests. In sitting back and thinking about the larger picture and our service to these tenants, there are a lot of people who are 55 and older who might not have a disability they really need, but would like to have a family member have access in case they fall, or let's say they have hearing aids and, you know, their family's calling them, they can't get ahold of them. That can create a situation where now we're calling for a welfare check or having staff go knock on the door to see if they're okay, whereas this would allow, if they have gone through this process and their child has a key or a key fob to get in the building, they can come check on them, knock on the door. Just different situations where they would feel more comfortable having a trusted friend or family member have a key fob to get to the property. So what we talked about, and we reviewed this as a team and then also with our legal counsel, creating a policy for anyone who is 55 and up living in any of the LHA properties, with the exception of our permanent supportive housing, because they have different rules than our light-type projects, that they would have access to get an additional fob. They still have to go through a process where they would make the request, we do a background check on the person that they're identifying as their trusted friend or family member, and then assuming they pass that background check, similar to our tenancy background checks, we would issue them a fob, and we would keep that up-to-date with an addendum every year to every week, so that we would check in, see, is this still a need? Really, the reason for the background check and checking in every year is because the need might not exist, they could lose the fob, they might have forgot, and so we want to just make sure fobs are not floating out in the world of access to buildings. We track all of our fobs through an online system, and we can turn them on and off very quickly, so if someone reports one that's lost, we can immediately shut off that access to that fob. So that's what I brought today, and so we have the resolution, and then the policy, and the lease addendum that accompanies it. Similar to what our lease already states, guests of tenants are welcome, but the tenant is responsible for their behavior, responsible for damages or anything that they do at the property. This just reinforces that, reminds them of that. Talks about the legal and financial responsibility, the conditions of issuance. It does not confer tenant rights to the person who has the fob. They are not considered a tenant, they don't get to claim tenancy. They are just a guest with a fob. We reserve the right to revoke access at any time for any reason. The identified guest must consent and pay for a background check prior to the issuance, and they can't transfer it to someone else without consulting with us because they have to go through a background check. We have them sign acknowledging this policy, have the tenant's guest sign consent to a background check, and then once we've got that, we have them come together, and we will issue a fob and have them sign it again. So kind of similar situation to other policies that we have. I think this will create more access to support for our senior residents without having to go through only these reasonable accommodation process that forces them to go to their doctor and get supportive documentation, and in some cases, they may fall. So I think it's creating more access, more equality, and it will honestly also help our staff because their family members will have access to them in case of emergencies. They can also let us know if something's wrong, if they come to visit and something's not, not right.
Do you have any replacement costs for those fobs?
So the fobs, we have a replacement cost in our lease, it's $40 currently. So if we issue, let's say we issue two fobs to a two-person household and they request a third one, we would note that, we would have, we would keep track of that in that system, and when they turn in their keys, if they were to move out, we would expect to receive three fobs, and if we didn't, we would charge them for that fob at that point.
What if an additional fob was given to a son or daughter, and they lost it, and you have to turn it off? Then do they need to pay for the?
They would pay for a replacement, yes. At that time.
So I'm going to add one element, just you will, this is the first of hopefully several policy, either newer policies or policy modifications we'd like to make. This is really something that, this is why we hired Lauren, is to help our, get optimized, and then this side, getting some of these operational side policies in place, standardized, consistent across for all staff to use, and really just making sure we're optimizing staff time and also residents' time. So hopefully this is the first of several.
I can add too, from a risk perspective, when we're looking at the properties, as you all know, we are implementing camera systems at the properties. And so that is starting right now, so timing actually works. And then, once we look at the new access control system for the city, we want that to integrate with a camera system so that when access occurs, we catch images in the facility that lets us get, you know, more pointed when we have improper use of the key fobs.
Commissioner Popkin, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. I wanted to follow up on the mayor's, or sorry, the chair's question on the cost here. So I understand the replacement cost is covered, but do we have enough fobs to give out a second one to anyone who wants to upfront? Like, I'm just wondering about the fiscal impact where it says none in the proposal here? And just want to know, like, do we have to acquire enough fobs in the beginning to have that supply, or do we already have that?
We have a pretty robust supply of fobs because we're constantly receiving them and ordering new ones. I don't think that will have a huge impact on cost. We don't charge the tenants for fobs when they move in, so didn't want to put too much of a burden. It's $45.95 for a background check that they're going to either cover or they'll have their guests cover it, so I didn't want to double that by charging $80 for both. I'd rather charge it on the back end because ultimately, the tenant is responsible for getting the fob back to us, and it would come out of their deposit if they weren't able to.
Yeah, that makes sense. So we're not, we don't really have much upfront cost here, if at all, from what you're anticipating because of the existing supply and the backend policies they've got.
And we have the right to update this policy. If we see something's not working, we can tweak it. To Harold's point, as we get the camera system implemented, one of the things that we may decide to do that's not caught in this is limit the access to the building to one specific door that we know has camera coverage. So that might be a change that comes in the future.
Great. I appreciate that. And one more question, but just to comment first, I appreciate the efficiency that you guys are trying to create here and the optimization. I think that's really important, and I love to hear that that's a direction that LHA is continuing to move in. So kudos on that. The only thing that I don't like about this is the name, and so I support the policy, and I just wanted to offer a suggestion for the name, because I think it just kind of doesn't, it's a little clunky and doesn't fully describe what it's actually doing. And I think that's, that could actually help LHA and just help communicate the benefits of this. So I wanted to just suggest that we actually amend it to call it the Additional Key Fob to Support Senior Residents Policy, rather than just the Senior Additional Key Fob Policy. It loses some of the personal impact, so I just wanted to offer that as a very friendly amendment.
Commissioner, get up. So I have a question around the background check. So what would be the criteria? So what would cause somebody to not be eligible?
So we would look at the same things that we look at for tenancy.
Okay.
So is this person convicted of certain crimes? Are they, have they been convicted of possession, manufacturer, that one about a year?
Got it.
Registered sex offender.
Uh-huh, yes.
All these things that we screen for in our tenancy election policy would be the same disqualifying factors here, so.
Okay. And then, you know, one comment, I really appreciate that you are moving forward with this. I had a conversation with, with a resident, and it was Champion Grease, and one of their neighbors had actually, he'd fallen, he's in his 60s, he'd fallen, and he'd been on the ground for 48 hours before anybody knew. And then, when they did come in, you know, he eventually, they took him to the hospital, but he eventually passed. So, you know, how many, how, we can be proactive, so I really appreciate moving forward with this, and yeah, I'll happily support this.
There's other things that we'll talk about in our operational update that goes beyond this in terms of things we're starting to roll out.
Yeah, and I see that this is happening because of connection with the residents and seeing what that need is. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Chris. So Lauren, I love this idea because I know that having home health care keeps people in their homes longer. But the keys to the actual apartments are different and separate.
Different, yes.
So when a person uses a key fob and coming, they have to connect with their family member or, you know, care.
Yes.
To, and if they don't open the door, then that's when they're going to alert you that there may be something wrong.
And they don't have to alert us if they want to call dispatch to do a welfare check. They have that power. They don't have to wait for our staff in case we're not there for some reason. That's always within their power to call and ask for a welfare check. It speeds it up when property management or anything is there because we can quickly open the door once PD arrives. We have that right under our policy with our welfare check, so, yeah.
And so your intention is not to give out apartments?
We are, no.
And are your keys marked, do you not have to give out some of it?
They are not supposed to duplicate them, and that isn't our, that doesn't mean that it doesn't happen, but, yes.
Well, I think it's a great idea. Yeah, and thanks for saying you have lots of other fobs, because I wondered about that too. We're going to be buying, you know? How many do you think you would be handing out if you give an extra every resident?
20 to 50 out of 517 units.
Okay.
So it's not.
It's not a large amount.
It's not a large amount. I mean, it might increase, if it's made a little easier, so we might see a slight uptick, but.
And we just find out if it's been lost. Apartment, you know, 1A gets a three fobs, you can just turn off that one fob, not all of apartment.
Right. They're individually registered, each fob, and so we, when we activate them, correct me if I'm wrong, we tie that fob digit to the tenant, to the unit, and so we know how many they have, which ones we can see to access, who's using it, so we can track that.
So what we could do, what we do is, that number that Lauren was talking about, we can actually just put Apartment 1A. So we track it that way. So it's a lot easier.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other comments?
Any motion?
I can.
I move LHA 2025-5.
Do you, sorry, do you want to talk about the change in the name?
Oh. What was it again?
Oh, with modification of the name.
I'm not married to the name, so I think his suggestion was additional key fob to support senior residents policy?
With that modification to the name.
Okay. Commissioner McCoy passed Resolution, LHA 2025, with the amendment to change the name of the resolution, and seconded by Commissioner Chris. Any comments? Seeing no one else, all those in favor, change the resolution in favor of moving the LHA 2025-05. Say yes, or hold up your phone. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That passes unanimously. Let's go on to the updated impacts of the city's proposed Registered Sex Offenders Ordinance to LHA.
Yeah, so commissioners, this is going to be hard for me to keep track because I'm going to be talking to you all as commissioners, and I'm going to be referring to directions that you all gave us at City Council.
Okay.
So if I mess that up, catch me on this. So the city, and the City Council directed staff to bring a proposed ordinance forward that has a set-top of 1,000 feet from a school or daycare and 500 feet from a public or private park for sexually violent predators, multiple victims, multiple offenses, and felonies involving minors. That ordinance is scheduled to be brought for the council to vote on May 6 in the first reading. So, let's start there. There's been some questions of, does this impact housing and glory properties? When we start at a high level and we look at it, we're talking specifically about the suites in Zenia, and their tenant service plans use lifetime registration as a threshold for allowing registered sex offenders. Lifetime registration means anyone required to register with the state. Generally, that is going to be sexually violent predators and individuals with multiple victims. It can also include multiple offenses and felonies involving minors, but it is, it is dependent on the actual crime and how it's registered. So when we're talking about sexually violent predators and multiple victims... So when we're talking about sexually violent predators and multiple victims, the tenant selection plans are pretty clear in terms of those individuals are not allowed to be in those properties. Correct? Questionable in the other two. So when we look at the impact, it's really multiple offenses and felonies involving minors, where they may or they may not be allowed to live in the facilities. That is really specific to the crime that was committed and how it has been adjudicated. So currently, when we look at the housing authority property, we have five individuals that are in Xenia, and under the ordinance, four of those five, had they, if the ordinance passes and they apply to live in Xenia, would not be allowed to live there. One of the five doesn't meet the qualifications that council directed us to bring back in the ordinance on, just to give you a sense of what we're looking at. Obviously, as they talk to the city council, the individuals living there under rules of, you know, how we create ordinances, this would only impact those individuals if they allowed the facility. But it would impact individuals that are applying to move into the facility over time.
So I just want to clarify one thing. The tenant selection plan for Xenia is driven by the state funding that's attached to it. It's a, a lower threshold for entry than at the suites because that has federal funding, and that's more restrictive. We don't have any registered sex offenders at the suites. But at Xenia, they are, they are off the bat, denied tenancy with the opportunity to appeal. These five made it through our appeal process, at which point we look at, look closer at the, we pull a criminal screening, look closer at the charges, interview them, ask them about, seeing how old the charges are, interview them, ask them about what personal growth and responsibility have you been working on since? How involved are you with whatever was required along with your, as part of your rehabilitation? And it is a discussion for, on the, as a part of the appeal team that makes a decision if this registered sex offender is a good fit to be in the property.
For the education of the crowd, what's that appeals team look like, the makeup of that?
We have an LHA representative. We have, are you on the appeals team, too? Okay. She helps us on the backend, out of public safety. All Roads is the supportive services provider onsite. Mental Health Part, Clinica, formerly Mental Health Partners, is the case voucher case manager onsite, and Element, the owner of the property.
It's just the three.
Oh, it's just the three. They're not involved. Okay, thank you. Just the three. Xenia has twenty-four hour security and case managers onsite at all times, and clinical case management onsite, part-time, in the week. So that's how the appeals process comes through.
Case management's only during business hours.
Yeah.
Right, through business hours, case manager.
To be clear, the clinical case management is not clinical case management related to, it's just general.
Right.
It's not specific to the clinical case management that you can see specifically to registered sex offenders. So at the end of the day, just to update you, this will impact Xenia. This is something that the state hasn't actually put as a requirement, but the state cannot have a requirement that violates local ordinances. So if council, when you vote on this, pass, we'll notify the state about the local ordinance, and then we will have to enforce the local ordinance, just like any other landlord would have to within the community. So we wanted to let you know what the impact was going to be and the magnitude of the impact in these facilities. That's what we're seeing right now. I don't know how it's going for it.
Is that triggered by Xenia's proximity to childcare?
Yes. There's, there's a childcare facility within a thousand feet.
Molly, do you charge a different rate for rent?
We are not allowed to be that under fair housing laws.
So they're charged the same rate as any other tenant?
So Xenia is a voucher-supported project where these are state vouchers, and then you use the income of the individuals to determine what they pay, if they pay anything. And so that is by formula in Xenia. I think part of why we see a difference between Xenia and the suites is the tenant selection plan is different. In the tenant selection plan we have it.
Steve makes a noise.
The tenant selection plan we have at the suites is more restrictive than what Xenia has. That is, there you go. That is, that is based on the state requirement.
And everyone at Xenia and the suites are exiting homelessness. And so being permanent supportive housing, often that's those that are, that have challenges in maintaining successful ten, successful tenancy elsewhere.
Is there any way, because LHA is a different entity, to exclude them from an ordinance?
Was the question, could the city craft an exception for LHA properties? You want a specific property to be exempted, or do you want a property that meet, like, a specific criteria?
Okay. I, I would want the whole LHA.
Okay.
All of their properties.
I think that's problematic. Yeah, I think, I think, I would say, putting on my city hat, that's probably challenging for many different reasons.
The tenant selection plans of all of our senior and multifamily already disallowed in our system.
Yeah. So that's the only reason the suites, the suites isn't really disallowed either.
It is, yeah, it's permanent supportive housing. However, it operates off of federal funding, just on their multifamily and other properties, and that's where that more stricter requires particular.
So our other facilities are pretty strict.
We, we said, I don't know if I got it, but the, the, the housing choice vouchers and the project-based vouchers that are federally funded, not the state ones, not any local ones, require us to deny admission to someone who is subject to a lifetime sex offender registration. And so they're all going to be a lot more strict in the way that they're done. But Xenia's financing was structured differently to allow this.
Xenia's financing is through the state.
Yeah.
And we're not the owner. We're just the property manager of Xenia, which is, which is a different component to this.
Okay. Well, could you clarify again? Did you say that initially, sex offenders are denied, that they have the ability to appeal?
Appeal, and that brings in that discussion and deeper look.
But that's on the Xenia side.
So Xenia is restrictive to some degree, but it has a little caveat attached to it.
It's not as restrictive.
It has appeal process, I think.
It has appeal process.
Or denied.
And, and just so you know, I've instructed staff when they go into this group meeting, if at any point in the appeals process, where they don't agree with the group, I have instructed them to provide that reasoning to the group in writing as to why we don't agree with the decision of the group.
Okay. And it's a three-person group?
Mm-hmm.
Easier than a fifteen-person group.
So I just wanted you to know what the impact, there's been some questions, that's the impact.
That's great information.
And also let me kind of say when the ordinance is coming and what that does, and then what we will have to do is the housing authority.
Okay. So and it wouldn't, again, it wouldn't displace the people that are already in there, but as they move out, new people coming in?
We will have to revise the tenant selection plan for any tenancy moving forward.
Just, just to, for the folks in the crowd here, just so they understand, when we hear things on first reading, it's not for discussion. We just have, it's for asking questions, but it's not for the discussion and the open comment that, that we get second reading.
Second reading has the public hearing, where you put the comments on the record as part of the public hearing. First reading, though, people can still comment in public invited hearing.
Right. But the council.
Correct. If council pulls it on the first reading.
Maybe a clarification on the timeline? Wow, all of your heads are suddenly turning. Hey, I, I think maybe I missed this in a, a little bit of a technology, but at the beginning, what was the timeline for when this is coming back to council?
Oh, May sixth.
May sixth.
And that's on first reading to May sixth?
Correct.
And just so I can understand more, are there other questions that the city is still, or staff are still exploring on this, which is why that's when this is coming back, or, like, what, what's the timeline, like, thought process there?
So different, different hat on, but we don't have a full council on April twenty-second. And so a full council is, I spoke to the mayor, and the mayor would like a full council for this conversation. And then there's not a meeting on the twenty-ninth.
I see. Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay.
So Harold, when is the discussion on the number of residents?
That'll come on the same day.
Oh, well, okay.
That'll come on the same day, but what we're balancing different hats here. But it is connected to this. The number of residents is also something that we'll, we'll think about in this related to permanent supportive housing, but council did direct to bring back a conversation on allowing the number.
Yes.
Of sexual offenders that can be in a house. That'll come on the same day, but because we had less clarity in terms of direction from council on that, we are going to bring the ordinance with the setbacks that you can vote on, and then you all can give us direction on the number to have another ordinance instead of, so we're going to split these things up.
Okay.
For council to vote on.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion?
Well, one of the questions that came up tonight is about a commercial enterprise in Arvon. Is that something we need to discuss separately?
That would need to be discussed at the city council.
Yeah, that has to be at the city council meeting.
So would we?
When we, when we bring that back, I mean, I think that is a discussion that we can go into as part of this, the number. There's differing state laws, and I think that's the piece that has to be brought into the conversation, that state laws have changed within the last two years, that have impacted local zoning codes. And I can talk about this in terms of housing authority and how we look at it. And the state, in some cases, has expressly preempted local zoning codes. So specifically, when you look at things like the number of non-related individuals in a house, when the state drafted that legislation, they said it's a matter of state interest. And so that's where they spurred the rejection.
There's three, there's three levels. So there's a matter of statewide concern, which is the state saying, this is important to the state, and it's important that the state have uniformity on this. And so we are taking this as a matter of, of simple, sole state authority. And then sometimes you have mixed jurisdiction, a matter of mixed state and local concern, where the state, like liquor laws is a really good example, where the state says, here are, there are a set of laws, but you can also have local control over certain areas. And then there are areas of purely local control. And, and there is a lot of jockeying back and forth every single year between the state pushing the boundary and cities pushing back.
City of Grand Junction has a different, Grand Junction, its Grand Junction has a different shape, where there's a house, there's a nine-bedroom house with twenty individuals living in it, which may exist in the newspaper. And it, it, it was the first case that really this state law triggered, but that's one piece. Then they have another state law that says if you're this, 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 or this, you can't discriminate, and you essentially have to treat them as a single-family residence. And so this starts getting into, as we see this fully working itself out, from a housing authority perspective, this could actually start impacting how we approach vouchers in certain ways as well, from a housing authority perspective. So you have these things that the state created that has fundamentally shifted. So, and understanding that it could impact us from a housing authority.
There isn't any legislation about allowing commercial sites in residential. You know, we don't want like a rendering plan next to.
Yeah, so that's, that's where we need to have this conversation because, yeah, they, they.
A car shop, or you know, where there's going to be a lot of traffic, and whatever. We have this one.
Severely.
Ability to move that to the commercial areas.
Are we getting into council?
Yes, we're.
Yeah, yes, we are. So let me just say, would it make sense to have more information come back on the twenty-second of April, so we have a little more time to digest this new basis?
So on May sixth, we could ask that at, at the council meeting. I want to make sure that we're not.
Yeah.
So on May sixth, you can make a motion to bring up more information on any subject.
And some of that information, I believe, is in previous presentations where we talked about this, for the council, but yeah, I'll talk to staff.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay. Update on housing choice voucher program funding shortfall.
So this is something that we considered, that we might have an ongoing agenda item about it, but we'll see how much changes, so month from month to month. What we'll say now is we've been meeting with our HUD reps. We have been analyzing our voucher-to-year tools to help show us what our funding projections are through the rest of the year and for two years. And it looks like we are projecting a shortfall. It looks like most front-range public housing authorities are projecting about a one-to-two-month funding shortfall. We're right there at one month, so we're kind of on the, you know, right there in the middle of the thread. And so we're taking actions now to make sure that HUD, that they have confirmed we are projecting a shortfall, therefore that we can start having certain conversations with them and preparing. So I think that that, right now, is where we're at, that we've had a really great progress actually talking to humans at HUD. And we're just doing the analysis needed to see what options and what levers we could bring to you for consideration if we need to. I think that's the update for right now.
So you do have a new HUD representative? Because I know the last one was gone.
Yeah, okay, good.
So part of this, for you all to know, is one of the things in the conversation is that they were very specific in terms of actions that we need to take to ensure that we're meeting the requirements associated with being in shortfall. Most of those we're already dealing. So if you get questions from community members asking, why aren't we releasing vouchers? That's the first thing that you have to do for HUD when you're in shortfall, is as vouchers are freeing up, not revouchering. And if you were to be in shortfall and revoucher, that's a big X in terms of getting the shortfall funding. And, and so they've given us a list of things that we need to consider doing. Those are the things we talked about in the previous housing authority meeting with you all in terms of not revouchering. They specifically spent a lot of time on bedrooms with us, and essentially saying, so right now, we've historically had some flexibility to say, well, it's one bedroom for every two people. Correct?
They usually put an adult, and they would put the kids in the other room, but you do two heartbeats per room.
Yeah, so HUD says two heartbeats per room. We have historically said, well, if it's an adult and a child, we allow for two bedrooms. They've spent a fair amount of time in that conversation, reiterating several times, that we should probably consider two individuals per room. So those are things that we, we are going to have to be mindful as we're looking at in terms of how we're approaching the vouchers. So we've had a good conversation. The good news is they're still entertaining shortfall. The good news is they're still entertaining shortfall versus where we thought we were potentially going to be before. It is getting pretty clear when we look at information that we're getting from other federal programs that we have, whether it's CDGVR funding, or when we're seeing kind of how OIG is going to approach it and what they're going to do, we're gonna have to be pretty firm and tight in terms of how we're approaching this. So, you know, we had a process where if people had changes in income and things like that, we could negotiate an agreement with them where they pay it back. We could be a little more flexible in terms of if they miss a month, you know, working with them, we can't be flexibility more. So we're also terminating vouchers on individuals who are not fulfilling the agreements that they make. But everything's been very, is now getting pretty crystal clear in terms of requirements that we're gonna have to really make sure we're on top of to not jeopardize any funding.
Any comments or questions? Oh, there you are. Matthew, Commissioner.
There I am. Yes, here I am. Harold, just to clarify, I appreciate you outlining the potential impacts and what we're planning for. If I'm understanding correctly, the like proactive, maybe this is the wrong way to phrase it, but proactive like reduction of
Yes.
available vouchers is intended to not displace people, but just, and not create, not add to like the homeless population, but just to reduce the potential risk of eviction or displacing people, not be able to serve people that they've already committed to, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's wise that we're doing this. Appreciate all of you working hard on that.
Okay, so no other discussion. Just move on to our interim executive director's report with development updates.
Sure. I'll take the development updates. All right, Ascent is just flying along through construction. I wouldn't say ahead schedule, but making so much progress, it's really fun to watch. We just did a site walk today with Wild Plum, our provider for the early childhood education center. They were really excited about what they saw. I mean, there's no drywall or anything yet, but it's still seeing it come to fruition. So on schedule with construction there for finishing up around December, at least up around January. We are starting, we just got proposals for financial, or I should say more of a rad conversion consultant, which really means somebody that is experienced in helping projects through a 202 program exit for the Hearthstone and the Lodge, and pairing that with financial consulting. So we just got proposals for that. We're analyzing those now. So what it's gonna be is we're entering kind of phase one, which is help us figure out what this project is gonna look like. What's the scale, how big should we scale it? How should we go about it? What's the timing? What's the constraints that we need to start planning for? So I think here in the next few weeks, we'll have a nice idea of what that project will really look like. And other than that, we are continuing to make sure that everything with Village on Main is moving towards closeout. And speaking of old projects, our Aspen Meadows flooring replacement has been underway. The common areas are now complete. We started working in units about a week and a half ago, so we're starting to cycle through those, and holding resident engagement there when we need as well. Other than that, we're looking.
So let me go back as a refresher for you all. When we talk about the conversion, the conversion is the Hearthstone and Lodge, and that's taking it from a 202 project into a, what's it called?
Well, it's rad conversion into a different program. We are going to determine exactly the program that makes sense.
So what does that mean and why are we doing that? As you know, right now, in terms of the lodge and the Hearthstone, when we go into budget conversations on the housing authority, you all do not necessarily control the budget. HUD controls the budget in the 202 program, so we have to submit a budget to HUD, and so they have to say, yes, we're okay with this budget. So when you get into situations where you, all of a sudden landscaping expenses have gone up, or snow removal has gone up, they can say no. And so it creates budgeting issues within the property, and that is, Lodge and Hearthstone are two properties where we don't have that flexibility in budgeting. Things like tenant services are non-existent because HUD doesn't approve it. Moving into these programs actually shifts the budget more to what we're used to dealing with on the other properties, correct?
The HUD, actually, the Hearthstone and Lodge do supportive services.
They do support it, but it's some of the other things.
It's not as flexible.
It's not as flexible as what we do in some of the other properties.
Correct. And a lot of the preventative maintenance,
Right.
they take out of our budget and say we have to do that through replacement reserves. So, things that you would normally have in a budget, they take out, depending on what funding they have available.
So really, the key is budget flexibility and what we can do on the property and how we approach it, is why we want to get it out of that 202.
And it most likely will come with an opportunity for a rehab of a certain scale. We're gonna make, we're gonna do the analysis to see if that needs to be a large-size rehab and really prepare these properties for the next 30 years, or do the critical systems and then put a place, plan into place for when the rehab, what happened.
Can you tell me once again, I'm sorry, what, 202?
So the, it's a HUD 202 program, supportive housing for the elderly.
Okay.
Is what the program's really around. It's an old program. Not very many new 202s come along out there. It's mostly maintaining the ones that are out there on HUD side. Most are trying to, or at least have plans in place for the future to try and convert out, just like we are.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we want to go to the occupancy review?
Nope.
Update on operations, however you want to.
So, we're still carrying a lot of vacancies. We have been, we have a plan in place. Quincy and I had the meeting to talk about how we're gonna tackle these vacant units. I also had a meeting with our supervisor to talk about how we can start analyzing how long it's taking. One other change I want to make to this report, which I say we will bring to the next meeting next month, is that when I pull these units in Yardi, there's a difference between vacant, because property management doesn't have an applicant, and vacant, but it's ready to rent. So I want to show those two different scenarios. You know, property management and maintenance have to work hand-in-hand. Whenever we have a notice-to-bake date or a situation where we may have a tenant no longer living there, whether that's they moved out, or they've passed away, or whatever the situation may be, we want to work on streamlining that process where the maintenance team is working efficiently to get the unit turned and ready. At the same time, our property management team is calling people on the waitlist. We have successfully moved all of our waitlists into Yardi. Our team has been focused on the rollout of Rent Cafe and getting the lease, all the documents, and the entire application and recertification process ready for Rent Cafe in Yardi. That's why we're still getting the same reports right now, because we're focused on, what would you call that process?
Implementation.
Implementation, which is taking up a lot of time for a lot of staff, both on the property management, the finance, and maintenance side. So we're gonna make some changes to this report, separate out the units, what's vacant because we just don't have applications, what's vacant and ready to rent, to show sort of that difference. We do have, our four vacancies at Aspen Meadows were holding because of the flooring situation. They're staging in those units to keep the flooring and materials and equipment out of the common spaces. I don't want any trip hazards. A lot of these, we do have applicants in process. I've tried to add that information as well. And then notices for move-outs also, if we have, they're technically not vacant, there's someone living there, but they're on notice to move out this month. The suites for our down unit, we walked that unit with the contractor, and there were some things they needed to correct, some quality issues that we pointed out in our acceptance process, so they are, they give us a time frame?
A follow-up function.
Okay. So we're just waiting to get those few. It's mostly cosmetic stuff, nothing too serious, huge habitability defects, mostly just quality of work. So we'll be getting those things corrected, and in that unit, we're working on reporting a applicant with clinical family health managers, for that unit.
So, I have two questions. Do we still have fentanyl properties that are being re?
Not fentanyl?
No.
We do, I'm sorry, we do not have any properties currently down.
Yes.
7228 was the one that we've been working on.
And is it ready to go?
It will be. It's been done, we just want to quality control from the reconstruction.
And the other question was, you had mentioned going through the waitlist previously that a lot of people have dropped off of it. How is that waitlist looking now? I mean, are you having success in finding people, or?
Turn that over to Quincy.
Oh.
Oh, Quincy, yes.
Not really, kinda. We're still going through it.
Okay.
As of right now, a lot of people have found housing.
Okay.
It's not something you typically wait on if you truly need it. So we're still purging through them.
Okay.
So hopefully we can give you a better update. I don't want to lie to you. We can give you a better update the next meeting, for sure.
Okay, that's good. Sometimes those lists just become stale. If you haven't had a lot of openings for a long time, you go back to people that signed up a long time ago, and then we may get through and it's completely, we haven't been able to pull people off, we reopen.
But we do get a lot of walk-ins. So once we do get through these, they'll be filled very quickly. We just have to go through them. So.
First come, first served, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if we could take walk-ins, they would've all been filled by now. So.
It's just the process that you have to go through. You have to do it that way.
And I think when we start coming into the 21st century, and having online processes, like people apply for the waitlist online, it's going to be much faster, it's gonna be more accessible, and we'll be able to probably reach more people through targeted outreach with our partner organizations. Right now, people can download an application, print it, fill it out, email it in, walk it in, they can come to our window, get an application, fill it out. I mean, it's it's not easy, especially for seniors.
No.
So if the application is something we can do online, and they can work with the senior center or some other service, whoever that they work with, or their family or friends, it will be much faster. And then gearing up for Ascent to open in early 2026, 75 multifamily units, we're gonna have a lot of people applying online.
So, kind of, there's a lot of people that I don't know were here when we took over the housing authority. So when you look at Yardi, think of Yardi as being the Lamborghini of property management software. And we were, the housing authority was utilizing Yardi like it was the old beat-up
Reliant K.
grand marquee that I used to drive when I first got my license. And so they weren't fully utilizing these services. And the struggle that we had is, obviously, when we took, challenges were, you all have seen, some of the challenges were immense in what we were doing. I think where we're starting to see the progress on it, as Kendra's been able to get the financials under her belt, and what you're seeing with what we're doing in fund balance forecasting, the hiring of Lauren and the hiring of Quincy, both have, and I think Quincy has a lot of experience in Yardi too, it's really given us the capacity to accelerate and start making some of these changes in it. There's a lot of things we can do in Yardi that just, we have to build from scratch, because they weren't built when Yardi was brought into the system. So I fully expect the progress to continue in that front, and it's a product of these three and all their staff and what they're doing.
So was it a staff capacity issue, or a technology capability, like capacity issue for the reasons why we aren't driving a Lamborghini in the 21st century?
It is. When we took over a capacity issue, it was originally never built out to do all of those things, even though it had a capacity to do it. So that was one of the problems we saw. We paid a lot of money, and I think are paying a lot of money for Yardi, but none of the things were being utilized.
Well, most Lamborghinis aren't cheap.
Yeah.
The, I'm glad we have that system in place to be the sense of like how LHA stacks up compared to other housing authorities in Colorado on like the technology utilization and whether that is used for streamlining. Is that something that's measured or tracked somewhere, or discussed at a housing authority conference?
We're catching up, because we're not where others are, based on the build-out, but we're catching up.
VCHA does not accept payments online. VCHA does not have, they have waitlist check for their waitlist application, but everything else is on paper. Their reasonable accommodation process is on paper. So it's, we're not that far behind. We're smaller than other housing authorities. I don't know what DEHA does, but they also have way more money than we do.
So I guess the punchline is, we're catching up and we will pass people.
Good. Well, it sounds like we know how to drive the Lamborghini.
Yeah.
Commissioner. Okay, thanks. So you had mentioned earlier about higher vacancy rates. So I do see that the current occupancy is 95%. So what is the goal that we're, that would be acceptable?
97.
97 is what we budgeted.
That's what you budgeted for.
Because we wanted to give ourselves.
Okay.
Because you're gonna have vacancies.
You are, yes.
We wanted to push ourselves.
And so if some of these, then, you know, as we're kind of navigating through, do you think that as we refine our, you know, addressing the waitlist and going through that at a quicker pace, that that's gonna get us to our goal, or do you think that?
It's gonna be a combination of the waitlist process, the application process being way more streamlined
Okay.
and faster, but also reducing our unit turn times.
Okay.
And just shoring up that process, because a lot of these vacant units that you see for like fall regarde, spring pre,
Yes, yes.
it's not the same six units every month.
Okay.
You fill one and two more.
Two vacancies.
You know, it's, there's been a lot of turnover in that specific area.
Okay.
A lot of unfortunate, unfortunately, a lot of debt.
Yes.
So, got it. Same thing with, we see that a lot with Hearthstone and Lodge as well.
So I think it's
But they're faster to fill, because they have a two-year wait, two-year long waitlist.
Okay.
Because of the nature of the program.
Got it.
Only paying 30% of your income towards that one.
Okay, and thank you for that narrative. The other thing, you had mentioned, you mentioned about how the senior center being as a place where people can go in and fill out. So, you know, I've heard actually now from a few people about, you know, not having technicians or even going in and asking for support, and then
Having to wait a month.
Having to wait, yes, the long wait time, as well as when they're there, some of the answers aren't getting, you know, like maybe the knowledge, that knowledge base isn't there yet. I know that, you know, as you're training new people, it takes time. But so that's, that's been a frustration, and since the senior centers in my ward, council hat, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I try, I try to be keen to that area. So, yeah, so is there, do we have bandwidth to have an LHA person there, you know, on, you know, weekend times or after? Okay, no, right. Oh, yeah, no, 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 don't, that's why.
I will say, they had some staffing, they had low staff, I think someone was on the attorney meeting, about 20, he was in?
Yeah, the senior center staff.
Okay.
And then that coincided when we opened up our senior project-based waitlist. That was our first run online. They happened to be short-staffed at the same time.
Okay.
And there was, I don't want to say there was a delay in notice, I think there, it wouldn't have mattered, they didn't have the capacity to help with that process. We do have a, say, is it quarterly meeting with senior services?
Okay.
We work really closely with them, we could probably do better. I also want to create an interest list
Uh huh.
for people to find out when are reopening things. I mean, we're not to be opening vouchers any time soon, eventually, but for like our project-based waitlist, or Ascent, all these other opportunities, because that's one thing we don't, we have a newsletter for current tenants that they can get about what's happening, but it's
Potential.
less or potential. So I'd like to do that as well
Yes.
to get that information out faster.
Okay. And, you know, and I'd also like to Okay, and, you know, and I'd also like to see, you know, as far as, you know, public goes, when is the best time? Are people finding that, you know, they go on the weekends and then find that it's closed, you know, or they afternoon, evening, you know, so looking at, at really what targeted hours that, you know, people who are out and about, you know, when is that peak time? So if we're, we're working on, we can't staff someone from some, you know, sunrise to sunset, if we could be more targeted and strategic about, you know, varied hours and.
Are you talking about at the senior?
At the senior center in offering that support.
So one of the things that Ronnie's doing is he's extended the hours to Saturday. So they are doing that.
Eight to noon?
It's not a, it's not an LHA question, but if council remember a couple of years ago, the length of time it took to deal with individuals coming into the senior center, did you ever see that grow? Extended out to about two and a half to three months just based on the volume increasing and in the budget process, council approved adding some additional staff at the senior center, so we brought that in a little bit.
Yeah.
But it's a volume issue there.
Okay, okay, yeah, and I mean, maybe then, maybe stagger some of those Saturday hours or one Saturday, it's just, you know, I'm not going to get in the way of the masters at work, but, you know, I think I'm hearing from, you know, later in the afternoon, it was, you know, from a few folks that I've heard from.
And I'd add that the resource staff has also shifted their hours to be there in the evenings as well, so there are resources, yeah.
And I think, you know, that would help with potential tenants moving forward.
And once we get through these updates, I'll update you on something that in process.
So my question is concerning the vacancy report, and you talked about vacant units because of lack of applicant, basically, and so my question is, is there a significant number of them where we can't find that qualified applicant because of where the income level is set?
Yes.
And what, like what are the legitimate options we have surrounding those besides renting them under?
So when you have a, like, let's say the unit that's vacant is underwritten adding 50% AMI, we do have enough, we do have some often wiggle room where maybe we drop it down to 45 or we might be able to bump it up to 55. But what we're seeing is either they're not meeting that AMI because they're over income or on the flip side, they're very low income, they're wanting a 40% unit, they don't make two times the rent.
Right.
And we don't want to put people in a situation where we're moving them into a unit where they're paying 50% or more of their income towards rent. So we have that two times the rent sort of rule, but if they're not making that, then they don't qualify.
It's a delicate balance, your margins that you can move, you've got to be really careful with, that's what we got into at Village O'Name to where you had 50% AMI units that they were renting at 30% AMI. And so if you all remember when we, financially, they were going to roll hurt, you've got to be careful with that and really manage your overall budget related to how you make those adjustments. Because if you make too many, it ends up having an impact financially, so.
And we have to, if we're going to do like a, it's not, it's not a rent concession, but if we're going to adjust the rent because we're having a hard time, we did that on some of our two-bedroom senior 50% AMI units. We have to show that we made an effort to market the unit and called numerous people and every single time they could not qualify before we're allowed to start shifting that rent amount.
Okay, so, what I was just going to say, so, for instance, it wouldn't be possible, let's just say you have a glut of 50% that you just can't rent, right? You're not finding applicants, but you're finding them on both sides, you wouldn't be able to reshuffle and be like, okay, we can move these up to 60 and these down to 40 and it washes out?
I would say a lot, some, most of our vacancies, because so much of our portfolio is senior housing, that if you have, which for many lit tech projects for many years, up until more recently, 50 and 60% units were a pretty common mix, 50s are still are, 60s are now, we try and stay away from. But for a senior living on social security, 50% rents are out of reach, am I wrong?
Absolutely.
So it's really a challenge to find them in that middle point.
That's why income averaging, I think, is something that, you know, we saw on like Crisman, income averaging lets you have more 30% and 40% units, but you're offsetting those with 70 and 80% units.
Which is easy to do when you open it up, but when it's already mostly rented out, you're not going to have that kind of flexibility.
So it's the way that were, the investors and the financing was created and how they built the scope and so, Ascent is income averaging. So everything we're doing is just trying to get to the spot to do essentially what you were saying.
Right.
But the older properties are a challenge.
And even at Crisman too, they underwrote the higher AMI units at a lower AMI.
Right.
So that, they're putting them out to market at 80% AMI, what they found was really hard to find people in that location that met, that could make that rent, so they actually did reduce the rent to, I think they underwrote them at 60. So they could go down and still cash flow and meet their debt service coverage.
Little CYA is what they do.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you have to do on these.
60% one-bedroom at one of our senior properties is 16.95, so that just goes to show, yeah.
That was the one thing I, because you talked about breaking out the vacants, I was just wondering if it was a significant number that fall into that one particular category?
And it's so dependent on circumstance, to the point that Lauren made, I don't think you can overstate this, is it's rarely, it's the same six units. And so if you are unfortunate and you have 60% AMI units that are being rented and you have a number of people either for health reasons or unfortunately they toss away that happen to be in those units, your vacancies shift on you and what it looks like and what you're having to deal with, so it's.
And depending on when they moved in, they, they might have been at a lower rent payment based on the AMI when they moved in and three years later, those rent costs have gone up because the AMIs have gone up and the requirements under CHAPA. I know on a project that we, that I worked on at VCHA, the lender, not the lender, the investor actually required the housing authority to, to raise the AMIs across that whole property with not having any wiggle room. Whereas we had typically tried to keep the AMI raises gradual for senior properties, understanding that their cost of living, their income doesn't change as fast as the cost of living does, especially with social security increases. So in order to maximize our profits, because we need to make money, we like to raise them to the maximum CHAPA rents, but sometimes that's a big jump and so other people could afford it two years ago, but now they can't and we're seeing that.
Going back to your waitlist and the application process online, is that through YARDI?
No, they through YARDI.
And will they have the opportunity to take themselves off that waitlist?
Yes.
Which will clean up our waitlist so much faster.
We also have the option to purge, so like on the HCV side, if you feel like the waitlist is really old, especially since we're not voucher-ing up, you have the ability to do a mass email to everybody saying, we're purging the waitlist, if we don't hear from you by such and such date, we're going to take you off. So there's, and I think we might have that on the affordable side too, I uploaded a lot of these waitlists and it's a lot of old, like people in 2022, 2023 that are on these waitlists. So, and you're working with the oldest first, right? So they've either found a home or maybe they went into assisted living already or they're with their family and so working through that list takes a long time.
Any other questions? Let's move through to coffee updates.
Perfect.
Will we, kind of do it now?
We are in our second round of coffees and conversations now with the quarterly and shockingly, not a lot of questions.
Really?
Like, we thought we were undated at these meetings because we're not meeting so often and it's been quite impressive. I think that's just due to better visibility with our property management and information, so that's been great. We are, we have at the, we do at Spring Creek, they finished, Next Light finished putting in the wifi system for the wifi bally.
Great.
We're waiting on Fall River, they, I'm stealing your thunder, do you care?
You hold it up?
The cameras, the cameras have been installed at the suites, we're just working on access and training for those cameras, next up is Spring Creek, probably after that will be Fall River just because they're already over there. So we're rolling out our cameras finally, which is exciting. We, we're continuing with landscape improvements, we're getting ready to sign contracts with our landscape contractor to get ready for the spring season, so that's coming, which is nice. We've had a lot of trees replaced from forestry through our IGA, the forestry team at the city of Longmont has to go over here and replacement of trees on LHA properties. So we had a bunch cut down along the road, Cookport, along Hearthstone Lodge, I believe they were ash trees and so they were taking those out, they've replaced those, they have cut down a couple around Fall River and Spring Creek that they have now replaced.
And Lauren, I've heard a lot of good comments from Aspen Meadows with the new flooring and they've gone very efficiently.
Smooth as we can, just placing people for a day.
And, you know, compliments on the landscape over there at Spring Creek.
We're going to continue to replenish mulch as much as we can, we can thankfully get drop chip on anybody gets those for your burn every year, so the team's working on that. Yeah, just beautifying our properties as much as possible. Sweets and Zinnia continue to have monthly coffee and conversations, I don't know if you remember, but DO did a study about trauma-informed design and the lack thereof at the suites versus what we typically would do nowadays under the Housing Person Trauma-Informed Design Principles. And they're coming back tomorrow to do a presentation to staff, take some questions and then do a presentation to the residents and coffee and conversations and then do some lunch, so we think going to that tomorrow. We've had a lot of audits, DOH has been doing their audits for home units, CHAPA's been doing a lot of audits and we're working through those, no, you know, substantial findings or issues. Molly talked about Ascent, we've been checking along on that, you know, thinking ahead, thinking of camera placement, thinking of safety, you know, looking at how we want to continue to develop in the future. One thing we've talked about is coming up with design standards so that we can standardize certain things across our portfolio and we're building it around it, which will make life easier for operations. Because I think we find we build really beautiful buildings, but then when you hand it over to the people that actually run the building, they're like, why would you choose this? So 15 different lights with 15 different light bulbs, like, why can't we just standardize like the process so we can order one product, so things like that, we're, we're thinking about. I mean, this really is the year of streamlining operations, getting a better handle on things, coming up with more policies and procedures and just kind of taking off, especially before we open Ascent. So that's going to be a heavy lift.
And we also hired a new assistant manager for the suites.
Oh, you did?
She started a week ago, she's been good, she's catching up on everything and we plan on sending out two more offers this week for another community manager and another assistant manager as well. Because Nikki was promoted, the assistant manager of Fall Creek-Spring.
Fall River.
Fall River-Spring Creek, always do that. Was promoted to a property manager over at the Hearthstone Lodge, so we're going to fill her position.
Great. Well, Sarah, I guess it's to you.
Yes. I'll summarize our calls, all of our senior properties had four or less. AM, or Aspen Meadow neighborhood and the suites had five and then Zinnia had 15 last month. Going back to the camera conversation real quick, because I'm super excited, Molly and I, thank you very much, by the way, she.
Of course.
Yeah, this has been a long time coming and thank you to Harold for pushing some buttons to move some things a little bit faster, but we'll walk, some of us are walking the suites tomorrow. They are all up online, all of our cameras are on the milestone, the server, they haven't been, the suites are installed but haven't been connected yet, that's kind of the easiest way to put it. But super, I'm just ecstatic about it and very excited that our, our contract with Ball, they move really fast, so I think Spring Creek and Fall River will take a week or two and they'll be done and we'll move on and you won't have to hear about cams again for a long time. And then our meth detectors are for Ascent, they've sent them in three different packages for cost savings. They're in LA right now, so that's a good thing. So that's, that's going to be another big task, 75 of those and tracking and all of that good stuff, we're starting to think about that, so.
Do you have them in the suites everywhere or?
No.
No, so our plan is when we have.
Yeah, I think it's an offer.
No. It's, it's this room, I was in another meeting earlier that you were sending me the entire meeting, so. So if I'm frustrated, it's because this is my day in this room. As we, as we get into units and we go through a cleaning process, then as we're doing Ascent, if you have a meth unit and you're cleaning it, then we're going to start cleaning it into units. Sarah came across a different cleaning technology that is more of a foam base, so it doesn't necessarily require full demolition.
You used that on one, didn't you?
Yeah.
Because that's in the, three of our bathrooms.
Three of our bathrooms, so.
In one unit.
In one unit.
Yeah, in one unit.
So that, that'll help reduce the cost and that renovation and then once you do it, then we're going to put the meth detector in the unit.
Okay.
So, yeah.
You want to either certified clean or new build?
Yeah. So the only thing I have to update you on is when you were talking about communication with the senior center and how we get it this week and help individuals, we talked to you all in your role as council, you all funded some dollars for us to build, what's it called now? It wasn't Mainly Car and Communities, now it's called.
Longmont Carinet.
Longmont Carinet, so that has just gone operational.
Oh.
And that's a program that we built in Salesforce that actually connects everybody that is dealing with different clients in the system. And the first group that is going operational, senior services, children units?
No, housing and community wellness, so our clinicians and community and neighborhood resources.
And then next will be?
And then next will be children with the families and senior services and then next two different.
And then eventually we'll move our core and lead folks into this system. Here's what it does, and we had a demonstration, I've asked Becky to do, put something on the council agenda, so you'll see a demonstration of this. So if I'm in the office and somebody comes and talks to me and let's say they're a client of senior services, I can go into the system and put their name in. And depending on the permissions that people have, because HIPAA is a little bit dangerous. Person A may see the full record of what's happening, if it's Christina, for example, she'll see everything, if it's me, I may just see a note that they're working with senior services and here's the team that's working with them. And then I can call them and go, okay, I'm meeting with this person, what are we doing? The cool thing about it is they can make referrals out of the system, so if they're dealing with clients, let's say in senior services that are looking for housing and they understand kind of where they'll fill the AMI, within the system, they can direct it to Quincy. And say, I'm meeting with Christina Pacheco and she's looking for housing, what do you need to do? It sends it to Quincy, it actually starts keeping a record of all of these communications and then if he responds, it's, it's in the system. And so what it's essentially doing is it's short-circuiting, we had a lot of failures in human intelligence because we, I was seeing way too many examples of where department A was dealing with something, department D was dealing with it and then F was dealing. and then F was dealing with it. And no one knew that they were dealing with the same person. And so we were not doing the best that we could in serving the members of our community. And so what, what this does is it starts, it short-circuits those gaps. So that then as we're supporting people, everyone knows what's going on and we can actually support the individual at a much higher level. When we move through the implementation, it will eventually get to a point where, I'll use myself, my mom's 93 and she's living in another community. I could fill out a form that is a privacy form, essentially. A what?
ROI.
ROI. But I could say, I'm the power of attorney, this person who lives in the community is the caregiver and here are all the numbers that you need to contact. I authorize public safety to do a welfare check because unless you have somebody that's authorized there and they call for a welfare check, public safety can't go in. And so there are many times where somebody's like, we need a welfare check. The property manager's called for a welfare check. The laws have changed in terms of who can go in, when you can go in and what you can do. Exigent circumstances really have to be the driver in this. It can't be because they may be in the back, you have to know certain things. So this form basically goes into the system and as anybody's dealing with them, then we can start seeing this information. There is a connection to Yori that, this Salesforce is not in the past, but we're waiting on the connection for Yori until we get through some of this other stuff that we need to do. But it lets us communicate more effectively. So some of the things you were asking about, how do we connect, how do we do these things? This system is the star of this. And how we're going to serve the community and what we're going to be able to do. It'll make us faster, we'll be more nimble in how we deal with situations and we won't be flying blind as many times as we do now where somebody will come in and we literally take hours of people's time trying to figure out what's happening. I'll know in five minutes. And we're starting to, I got a link to see the system and what's in it. Extremely helpful because all the messaging comes from there. Eventually, we're probably going to migrate and only use teams for video conferencing and everything we're going to do is going to be in the system simply because it keeps track of the record. Eventually, I want to move it to like customer service kind of requests. So that even if you all send us an email, you'll have a link and you go and see what is the result and how we're resolving it organizationally. So it's a fairly significant shift, but it's a shift that is, makes us really more efficient and effective. And behind all of that's cost savings.
This sounds really insightful.
I know.
And incredibly helpful.
Yep.
Up to date. I, I was just thinking as we were sitting here of how different this meeting is compared to two years ago.
Oh my God, yes.
Because now you are looking towards the future, make things better where it's just trying to make, a couple of years ago, just make day-to-day work. And you don't look nearly stressed.
I go on vacations now.
We had to make him take a vacation.
Well, four years ago, I thought I was going to kill over. But no, it's a great team. I mean, and I think that's part of what's behind all of this is building the right team and being judicious and, you know, we're not, you know, early on, we were, we just needed bodies. Now we're tactically making decisions to say, we need to fill the position, but let's not rush it and get the wrong person.
Exactly, you have the right fit.
And I think what, as we've been able to evolve through that process, that's why you're seeing the coffees and conversations and things, because having the right people is as important, if not more important, than having the right technology in what we're doing. And I think that's been a major shift in how this has been going. You know, the next challenge for us is the next project. And we talked to you all about that, about looking at a more mixed income project that layers financing and where you can layer Lytec, you can layer attainable, you can layer market rate into a project. And that's really the last big push that really gets us into self-sufficiency from the financial standpoint. So that'll be maybe coming to you all in the next few months as we start zeroing in on what that could be.
Great, can't wait, that'd be a project.
Well, it'll, it won't be breakneck. If we come to you in the next few months, it's a methodical timeframe because we need the next project. When we look at our fund balances and we look at our fund balance projections, we need the next project to go live in around 2020, late '26, '27. And so if we start now, we're not breaking our neck.
Right.
To manage the financial piece of this. And so you're starting to see more methodical movement in terms of how we're approaching it.
It feels very strange that my development updates are. We are, we're in thinking phase.
Yeah, yes. It's a triage.
Well, the last thing on the agenda, are there any, Commissioner comments?
I have just a update and it's more like announcement for more staff, I mean, council too. So we have our Columbine Elementary, Rocky Mountain Elementary and Indian Peaks are doing the career fair. Last year, the mayor and I had a table. We got to talk about council, it was a lot of fun. So I'm pushing this out for anybody, staff. I'm still going to do another council table, so if anybody's interested, let me know. It's going to be May 7th from 11:00 to 2:30. If you only can stay for part of the time, perfect. But it's, you know, career day, you know, looking at getting kids excited about different professions and knowing that, you know, maybe college bound isn't the only thing. Or if they are kind of teetering on that or, you know, setting those career paths, they can kind of have an interest for what's out there now. So if anybody, you know, talk to, talk to your people and networks and, and yeah, and I will send the link to register. And if you are interested, send me an email and I'll send you out the link.
Best one yet. Yeah, we'll get you, yeah.
I forgot one thing, well, we forgot. So True North, True North, April 26th is the day that applications go live on the first 55 units. We think the interest list is somewhere around 600, it could be higher now. And so April 26th is the big day for the first 55 units.
Well, we did share that information out with 1,475 union members and they were all very excited.
So if anybody's on the interest list, April 26th, be ready to roll at?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, okay.
The, the sales team is going to be sending out the applications in advance starting this week so people can have them pre-filled and submit up at 9:00 AM on the night. I would also say that during coffee and conversations, we did bring this up to LHA residents as well because one of those goals would be anybody that could be ready for the next step homeownership, that they have the opportunity as well, so we made sure to share that. We don't have a voucher newsletter, but we've been talking about it every opportunity, which is usually one-on-one conversation, but that's one of our goals for the future.
Fantastic. And Saturday, the 19th, that is December, they're going to have a stand session for True North as well, so.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
Do they have to create an account to log in to apply? So it's just?
It's like an email.
Okay.
Do you need to introduce the adjournment? Yes, but I was just going to ask if there was anything else before we had that motion. We're all good? Okay. Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner McCoy, may the motion be adjourned, second by Commissioner Chris. All those in favor, thumbs up.
It's gotten progressively more enthusiastic.